So hello and welcome to everybody for this special session of the Cliffgrad webinar series. Today's session is a special session which we're running in partnership with the World Farmers Organisation. And so we're going to hear a panel discussion from three young farmers and ahead of that, an introduction on the World Farmers Organisation itself. So I'm Deborah Knox and I am with the Global Research Alliance Secretariat. For those of you who know Hazel, I work with her. And so I'm going to provide a few notes on today's session and how it's going to run. It's going to be a little bit different from some of our previous sessions as we are going to be running it more as a panel discussion. So a few notes, the session is being run as a webinar, so we're going to have a short presentation first on the World Farmers Organisation and then we're going to hear three other short presentations from our young farmers. Feel free to ask questions throughout those presentations in the question and answer box so we can make sure that we have some good discussion ready to go for that, for our discussion session which will follow after that. Make use of the chat function, as I already mentioned, to introduce yourself, say where you're joining from, but please make sure to use the question and answer box to ask questions of the panelists just so we can keep track of only one system when we're looking for those questions. If you haven't used the Zoom question and answer function before, you are able to type in those questions and then also like questions of other participants and that'll ensure some of the most, the questions that most of the group wants to hear come to the top so we know which ones to pick. And then the recording of the session will also be made available later on on the GRI website and we'll send out the link after the session. So let me introduce now the Chair of today's session, Louisa Volpe, Head of Policy Development for the World Farmers Organisation, which is a member organisation composed of national farmer organisations and cooperatives whose international secretariat is based in Rome. Ms Volpe's area of work is focused on global policy presentation and processes on climate change in the 2030 agenda, food security and nutrition, research and innovation in agriculture, agriculture and food systems. Previously, Louisa had spent most of her professional career at the International Fund for Agricultural Development, EFAID, working on projects and policies targeting indigenous peoples and farmers. In 2012, Louisa joined the Office of EFAID's President in the Partnership and Resource Mobilisation Unit, working on public partnerships. Ms Volpe also worked at the World Health Organisation European Office in Rome and in the private sector as a communication, in a communication agency specialising in events organisation in Rome. She graduated in political science from La Spenza University in Rome in 2003 and in 2006 she obtained a Masters of Communication at Congo E Association Management School of Rome. She's an expert in neurologistic programming at the masters level and interpersonal communication. So welcome Louisa, thank you very much for agreeing to chair this session. We're very pleased that this can sort of continue the partnership between the Global Research Alliance and the World Farmers Organisation and we're really looking forward to hearing about what you do in the World Farmers Organisation and also your gymnasium programme which the young farmers that are speaking today have graduated from.
Deborah, let me thank you very much first of all for inviting the World Farmers Organisation to be partner in this event. For us, young people and young farmers are probably the most important target. Our members and boards value a lot the programmes that we have with them, but also the partnership with the GRI. We've been partnering with the GRI since long time and we've been also exchanging in study tours in New Zealand and in Italy and more has to come after Covid possibly. So thank you also on behalf of the whole organisation for organising this event and also for having in the panel three of our strongest members and participants in WFO programmes. I will try to share my presentation just to give you a heads up on what the WFO is And then please, you can also interrupt me if you have questions. I will be, I will go through the slides very briefly because I don't want to spend so much time on technicalities, but I'm ready to an interactive discussion with you and the audience that is kindly following us today. So as you rightly said, WFO is the World Farmers Organisation, is an organisation that was funded by the farmers themselves through their national structure. This means that all the people we represent are farmers, only farmers, just farmers who have tried to establish a structure through which they are able to speak to the international institutions and making advocacy on their priorities and interests at global level. Here you can see the distribution of our membership which goes throughout the six continents. At the moment, we have 75 farmers' organisations as members from more than 50 countries, which makes about 1.5 billion farmers represented through the WFO. So our vision is that one day rural communities will be listened to in all the fora that are represented at international level, that have decision-making function at international level in a way that farmers are really sitting at the table of the most important policymaking structures that have an impact at global level but also national and local level. So our mission is to represent the farmers in these tables, making sure that the farmer's voice is heard. In 2017, we approved a new strategic framework which is meant to implement the vision and the mission of WFO in a structure in five pillars. The representation, so representing the farmer's voice, the networking, open it up to partnerships, the policy development, because as always, as Tio, our president, always says, you cannot influence policies if you don't have policies. So our main function is also to structure policies that can really represent the farmer's voice and advocate for it. Advocacy is in fact the fourth pillar of our strategic framework. And indeed, we also have a special attention to the capacity building of our members and the gymnasium programme that I will describe later on in my presentation is part of this The best part of this organisation is that we implement a bottom-up approach. What does this mean? That it's in our farmers to elaborate policies and positions vis-à-vis special events or global discussions. How do we do it? We do it through working groups. We have in fact eight working groups on themes that are priorities for the WFO and that's touch base on the main teams that have more influence in the agricultural sector and in our farmers. You can see, I'm not going through all of that, but of course, youth empowerment and climate change are among these. The governance of WFO is structured, is kind of simple, but also made in a way that all the membership is represented. The General Assembly, which is basically the representation of all members of the organisation, is the entity that has more power within the organisation. The General Assembly then delegates the management of the organisation to the Board of Directors. The board is composed of one member per each constituency, meaning one member per regional, per continent, sorry. So you have Africa, Europe, Latin America, North America and Oceania and Asia. And the General Assembly also elects the President. The President is at the moment Dr Tio de Jaeger, farmer from South Africa. And this is the Secretariat. We are very few, as you can see, but very young and dynamic. The Secretary-General is at the moment Arianna Giuliodori. And here you can see the picture of all the members in the Secretariat. We are few but very committed to serve our farmers' members. Our partners are composed of, of course, farmers, civil society, private sector organisation and all kinds of stakeholders that work in the agricultural sector because one of the beliefs of the organisation is that farmers cannot do anything alone, but they need to partner with other members in the value chain and other actors that can have an influence at political level. And of course, one of our main partners, as I said, is the GRI, which was actually also one of the first partnerships that the organisation established in 2012, the year when it was created. As I said, climate change is a priority for us and for this, we have also established another programme that is called the Climate Makers. The Climate Makers is an alliance of members that see farmers' organisation first and then other members that represent the other stakeholders. But the theme I would like to concentrate today is our programmes on young farmers. As I said, youth empowerment is probably the first priority of the organisation and our young farmers are entirely, entirely involved in all the activities of the organisation. We also have a youth committee that is composed of two members from each of the constituencies of WFO and a facilitator. And actually, the youth committee is the committee that promotes and leads the position of our young farmers mainstreaming their ideas within the organisation. What is the gymnasium programme that a touch base done before? The gymnasium programme is a high-level capacity building programme that we have established in collaboration with Bayer and it's actually a programme where our young farmers receive classes, lessons on themes related to agriculture from international experts that are people working in our partners, partner organisations, international organisations, experts of the sector, I would say. And the programme lasts for a couple of years in which our group of young farmers meet a couple of times per year, back-to-back international events and conferences, so that they are exposed to the class lessons for two days and for the following two days, they also attend the international conference so that they have a practical experience on what they have learned in the class. I leave it to Sarah, Richard and Brenda to describe their experience in the first edition of the gymnasium, but I can advance that the second edition is going to start in November 2020, next month, with a new group of people. So I'm really hoping that we can continue this collaboration and this programme for the years to come. This is the first group of the gymnasium. Here we were in New York in a break during our classes and I think that we have all enjoyed the experience from the smiles that you can see from the faces of our students. Some numbers. So the first group was composed of 18 people, the next one would be more or less 20, maybe more. So at the moment, we are empowering like 40 young farmers. The month of training is more or less 30. The first group had six sessions within the 30 months and they received 25 training modules from international experts, which by the way included also representatives of GRI. And they also had an opportunity to participate in international conferences and events like, as you can see, the CFS, Committee on World Food Security in Rome, the GFFA in Berlin, the UN HLPF meetings in New York, Madrid, UNFCCC COP25. And then the last session was held in Rome in WFO offices where they could also have one full day dedicated to the construction of personal skills beyond the technical skins with a team of coaching. If you want to follow WFO and WFO activities, these are all our social networks. For the moment, I will stop here, but I look forward to our discussion. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much Louisa. Really good presentation. Please, can I just remind everybody to start putting your questions into the Q&amp;A box? If you have any questions for Louisa at this time for the WFO? Otherwise, I might just ask you Louisa to introduce the first of our panelists so we can get started on that and we'll come back to the questions that everybody's asking at the end.
Sure, Deborah, thank you. I would like to start with Sarah. Sarah is a young farmer from New Zealand. She's been very active, both in the gymnasium programme of the first edition, but also in supporting us with the cooperation with the GRI. We have also actually leveraged on her experience in constructing a very nice study tour in the New Zealand farms, including hers, and she also participated in the study tour in Italy. So Sarah, please, give us some heads up of your experience in collaborating in these two programmes. Thanks.
I will just gonna share my screen and just talk a little bit about my farm and things first. So basically, yeah, so from, from New Zealand, as Louisa has pointed out, just a little bit of background about my farm. So I'm farming with my parents and an awesome team of staff on the east coast of New Zealand's North Island. So we're farming 3,770 hectares, which is even by New Zealand standards reasonably big, less than 10%, of that cultivable. So it is sort of true, true hill country pasture-based farming. We've got about 300 hectares of forestry, running roughly 20,000 sheep and 1,000 cattle. Family actually started farming originally in New York in the States and moved to New Zealand in 1998. So had experience farming across both continents, which gives, gives an interesting perspective to a lot of discussions. And we've got family farming in the States still. On the farm, we've done quite a few trials over the years, so have had quite a lot of engagement with the research community and scientists and stuff. We've done nitrogen trials, trials around climate management, trials around lifetime sheep performance amongst other things. Just in terms of some of the New Zealand context, just a couple of things to point out. I thought I'd just touch on briefly in case they come up in Q&amp;A discussion, just trying to provide a bit of context to sort of where I'm, where I'm coming from, from that New Zealand perspective. Sort of some of the interesting things that are going on in New Zealand is we've got, and you might have heard about some of these earlier in previous sessions through the, through the GRI. So we've got the PASTRAO Greenhouse Gas Research Consortium, which is focused on providing knowledge and tools to New Zealand farmers for mitigation in the agricultural sector. And that's, that's a partnership between the sectors that got set up about a decade ago, basically so that they can invest, invest in tools to help us with that mitigation. And they work quite closely with the New Zealand Agricultural Greenhouse Gas Research Centre, which I'm sure you guys all come across, which has very similar focus, very similar focus with focusing on agricultural mitigations. Other one, a new, newish programme in the last year is Haywaka Ekanoa, which has got 13 partners across the primary industry and government. And that's all focused on primary sector emissions and digging down to that, to that farm, farm level, because a lot of stuff to this point has been done, done nationally. And so that's sort of focused on on-farm reporting, looking at finding an appropriate pricing mechanism, looking at farm plans and on-farm measurements and management, management techniques. So that's, it's in its early days, but it's probably quite a unique internationally piece of work to try and, to try and think, bring things down to the farm, to the farm level. Yeah, which will, which will be, which is from a farmer's perspective, a very interesting experience, but also a very complicated one and one very reliant on being informed by quality science, which is where, where you guys all come in. And then two pieces of legislation that sort of dominate the discussion about climate change in New Zealand are Zero Carbon Bill, which includes New Zealand's commitment to being net zero by 2050. But what's probably a little bit unique about that commitment is we've taken a split gases approach, because there's a recognition that GWP 100 doesn't work very well for methane, which is the lion's share of New Zealand's agricultural emissions. And so they've got, we've got a separate target for methane, which is part of what was driving, which is driving some of the work in Haywaka Ekanoa. And then we've also got an emissions trading scheme, which has, doesn't include livestock emissions at this stage, partly because of the difficulties in farm level, farm level accounting. And also just touching on the gymnasium and GRI study tour, awesome, absolutely incredible programmes to be involved in, great to share ideas and be able to network with like-minded individuals from around the world and be able to share, share that knowledge and ideas and sort of really broaden your perspective and empathy and understanding about the challenges other countries are facing and how they're, how they're responding and what, what's going on, because so many of our, so many of our challenges are common globally. And I, you see that a lot particularly in, you know, the climate change space, for example, that, you know, if we find mitigations that work in one country, they're likely to work in other countries, so that collaboration becomes so important. And so that opportunity to be able to collaborate internationally and have those relationships enduring into the future is just so invaluable. So I'm very grateful for, for those programmes. And yeah, obviously happy to have Q&amp;A throughout the rest of the session, but just, yeah, trying to provide a bit of context to, from, from the New Zealand perspective and sort of where I'm coming from. So if I, if I say strange things, you sort of have a bit of an idea about why.
Sarah, thank you very much for sharing your experience, that was great. So before I move to Richard, I see some, some questions in the chat box and all of them relates to how do I be part of the gymnasium programme? You are all very welcome as young farmers, but let me clarify that the programme is reserved to the membership of WFO. So the first step would be to promote your organisation participation in WFO as a member. And then for the next edition of the gymnasium, you can of course apply and your candidacy would be considered to be part of this programme. There are some requirements, the first of all, of course, is the membership to WFO. You have to be a young farmer, so less than 35 years old, English speaker and nothing more. So hope this clarifies, but then please don't hesitate to contact the secretariat directly. Thank you. I also see that Rangari Rai, sorry for my pronunciation, Lucia Mindo has raised the hands. Please Lucia, the floor is yours. Lucia, I think you are muted.
I'm sorry, I didn't notice I raised my hand, that was a mistake.
Ah, okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. So let me call upon our second speaker going from New Zealand to Europe, Richard. Can you tell us, can you share your experience in your country as a young farmer and also as a participant in the gymnasium programme? Thanks.
Thank you very much Lucia, good morning everybody. And it's quite difficult to follow two fantastic presentations there and that's how I want to introduce myself really. I'm here as, as the practical, hands-on, commercial farmer, so I'm not going to be that sciency, I'm going to talk quite lame in terms, but again, we're running a business at the end of the day and I feel very honoured to be part of this discussion as well, because I think we're all stronger when we all work together and we all put our ideas together. So just to give you a bit of background information, we farm right in the middle of the UK, so just about 20 miles north of Birmingham, which is called the West Midlands and the county's called Staffordshire, and we're beef and cereal farmers. We do a lot of environmental work as well and then we welcome a lot of visitors onto our farm as well, which we think is very, very important. But how it all started for our family business was through my grandparents actually about 70 years ago. My grandmother was one of six children and my grandfather was one of seven children. They were both farming families, but because they were such big families, they were told to go off and make their own way in life. And that's what they did, that they rented a farm and they worked very, very hard and they managed to buy that farm and then they also managed to buy a second farm as well. So both their sons managed to have a farm each. And again, that, it was all down to very much hard work, no days off and just being totally dedicated to what they do. And when we talk about sustainability nowadays, I think there's probably no people that are more sustainable than my grandparents, to be honest, that they didn't waste anything, they ate all their food locally and they shopped locally and everything. And I think now we've almost lost that a bit, especially in the UK with, with the way the developed economy is. So personally, I grew up with that background and I always knew I was going to be a farmer. I grew up, I grew up on the family farm and really loved what farming was all about. But my family actually said to me, Richard, there's no money in farming, go and work for Tesco or one of the big supermarkets, that's where all the money is. So I went and did a degree in food marketing with, with business studies. And what was quite interesting when I went to do my degree, that the talk was there was, oh, we'll always need farmers because the global population is growing so big, so we need to produce more and more food. Now, I think we all know in this discussion today, it isn't quite that simple, because how we, how we produce that food and the impacts that we have on, on the climate is very, very important. Because how we how we produce that food and the impacts that we have on on the climate is very, very important. And also the impacts that climate has on how we can produce our food as well and food security. And that's something I'd like to touch on in a second. But just to carry on my my personal story, so I've realized through my career that we're affected very much by by politics and also affected. It's all about turning up and being part of the conversation. And I always say, if you're not at the at the dinner table, you're on the dinner. So it's best to be at the dinner table and be part of the discussion. So so that's why I do a lot of work with the National Farmers Union in in the UK. So I've been a local chairman, I've been a county chairman. And I've also chaired something called the Next Generation Policy Forum, which is all about young farmers being involved in policy decisions that shape our future. And I think the NFU is a very, very important organization. And that's the links I've got through to the WFO and being on the gymnasium, which which again was a fantastic experience. But if when I look at the few challenges that we have in the UK, and I think unfortunately, one of the biggest elephants in the room that I think we all challenge is as the climate is changing, food security is going to get more and more difficult. So the problem, the challenge is then that probably farmers are going to play trying to cultivate more land to just to to beat that food security issue. But then the more land that we cultivate, or the more intensively that we cultivate things, we might even cause more issues on on the climate and climate change as well. So I think we have massive challenges there of how we can put a square peg in a round hole, for example. And even in in the UK, the extremes that we're facing at the moment, we've just had our worst harvest for what we think is about forty years. So the grain harvest in the UK was below ten million tons. Last last year was sixteen million tons. And, you know, we haven't had it below ten million tons for forty years. So so that's a challenge. And again, it's how you incentivize farmers or how policy and policy and farmers work together to ensure that we don't cause damage to the to the climate. And essentially, in the UK, we're very highly regulated as well. So we're very regulated. Some of the questions is how do we work with science? Well, we are very highly regulated on what we what we can use, what inputs we can use. And then we do work with the academics and we work with the universities as well. Personally, on my farm, like I'm very commercial, so I try to use as many manures on the farm as possible and digestate as well from anaerobic digesters, which is organic fertilizers rather than using manmade fertilizers. And first and foremost, that's because hopefully there's a bit of a cost saving there for our business. But also, we think it's good, it's good for the environment. But being one of the farmers that does that, I have worked with the James Hutton Institute, which is based up in Scotland. And they've come and done soil tests on the farm, just to check if there's any differences between using using those different different types of fertilizers. Being part of the WFO Gymnasium, I feel gave me an insight into what is going on in the future. And compared to the discussions we're going home at home, on the gymnasium, we're having discussions that are ten years in advance. And even just listening to Sarah's discussion there as well, it's fantastic how the the G A or G I are very focused on on greenhouse emissions and how we can combat this and how we can adapt and mitigate to it. In the UK, we have been a little bit behind this. It's actually three years this week since we started the gymnasium. And then what's happened in the UK, we've actually set ourselves an ambitious target of trying to be net zero by twenty forty. But we only actually set that last year, even though on the gymnasium, we were talking about this three years ago. So like I said, that's the that's the advantage that the gymnasium has given me, an insight into the future and working with everybody. But in terms of the net zero target that we're setting ourselves, and it's my generation that's going to be focused on this, and even the generation behind us that's going to have to achieve this. We're looking at essentially resource efficiencies, so trying to get as much out of what we are being using on the farm, being as productive as possible. And we're looking at renewable energy production on farms as well, and that's to displace fossil fuels. And then we're also looking at carbon storage on farm. And that's through trying to store carbon in our soils through increasing organic level, organic matter levels, but also in the vegetation and the trees that we grow in the hedgerows as well. So again, I'm not going to pretend to know all the science behind it, but that is the focus. And that's probably my my future career, the the direction it's going to go in. I'm happy to answer any questions later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Richard. Thank you also for pointing out that if farmers are not at the table, they are probably in the menu, which is exactly why our organizations exist. Because farmers have to sit at the table and discuss fairly and openly with governments, with international institutions, and with all those decision making entities that decide on policies that then have an impact in the country up to the farm level. And I hope that this also replies to one of the questions in the chat box. Taitis Abdini, sorry for my pronunciation, but you know, as an Italian, and sometimes it's very difficult for me to read the names. And you ask, how does the policy advocacy by WFO work? It's about global or national? Can you give examples? Yes, it's global, definitely global. We we talked to United Nations organizations, World Bank, WTO, those organizations that, as I was saying before, have decision making power in a concerted way with governments that then have to implement those agreements, those decisions at country level. One big example is, for example, the negotiations on climate and the Paris Agreement itself. It was also thanks to the advocacy work of WFO that some mentions to food production and food security have been included in the agreement. Because when Richard says, UK has decided last year to go net zero in twenty forty, and now we have to look for solutions to achieve this target. This is exactly what comes from an international agreement, which is the Paris Agreement, and how this then has an impact in national policies that farmers, together with other actors, are called to implement. So that that's why it is important that farmers discuss and negotiate at international level. I have a nice question in the in the chat box that is from Durba Kasha. What is the major climate change related challenge that the farmers are facing? And how are they dealing with it? I will ask, after the panel, I will ask our young farmers to reply to these questions. And the other question is on from Tulasi. Work on mitigation of GHGs in partnership with the farmers in Nepal is quite challenging with the viewpoint of the cost associated with. Can someone provide some highlights how the resources are managed, especially cost of studies in personal farms? And this is something that probably Sarah from New Zealand can reply. But I would like to go back to our young farmers' presentations and call on Brenda to give to share her insights from South Africa. Brenda is also managing a farm in the in South Africa, which is also the country of our president. So today she has three legacies to bring on the table. The first one is hers as young farmer, woman, young farmer. The second one is also a responsibility that received sad burden yesterday because the president of her organization Afassa passed. So I would like to thank Brenda in particular for having joined this panel despite the sudden moods, bringing the legacy and the responsibility of the organization on her shoulders. And also as representative of the gymnasium program and all the activities in WFO. So Brenda, thank you very much, first of all. The floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. Yeah, please excuse me if my voice becomes a bit shaky. I'm a farmer in South Africa, first generational farmer. I'm doing mixed farming in my family. And mainly there's crops, which is grains and fresh produce livestock. I do cattle, I do goats and game. And in the last two years, I've already, I've started to move to other value chains like packaging and processing of nutritious and fortified food. And I guess what brought the need for us to start now processing was to realize just how unaffordable food is, especially in my continent in Africa. So the company was set up just to make sure that one is able to ensure that no one goes to bed hungry and also to reduce the cost of obtaining food for those disturbed people who are not able to afford nutritious food. So my involvement in the sector has been around, I guess it's more around the passion as well for people in terms of. I grew up with a mom who was who left teaching just to go to food processing. And that has opened up my mind in terms of to in terms of realizing the pains that it takes for a lot of people to put food on their table. And it was one of the main drivers for me to enter into the agricultural sector as well. And also I battled as well with getting access to resources as a young person who wanted to start begin to participate in the sector. One was on the financial side, it was inclusivity as well as a young woman as well, which in Africa, farming is known to be more of a men's kind of industry. And just coming out as this young person who you first crossing on the gender border lines and also not only that, and also the racial lines as well. So it has been one of the reasons which made me aware or made me want to do more in terms of ensuring that I become part of the few that are targeting to transform the sector. And I'm with the organization Afassa, which is a national organization. I'm also on the executive council, National Executive Council. And currently, I'm serving as one of the ministerial trustees in the mid industry trust, which part of government, which safeguard the ministers' interest in terms of how the trust are running and also how we manage the resource, like for this one is militated or the mid industry and also the research component of what best ways do we have there in terms of one, raising our livestock and also just finding any other solutions. We talk to your greenhouse gas emissions, because we know everyone will always complain about how cattle just main polluters in terms of releasing methane and also depleting or contributing rather to your soil erosions. And also coming from the technology industry, which is where I started my career or when I started, I started my career in the ICT industry. And my dream has always been to find ways where we transform and find new ways of modernizing our way of farming. And I guess my involvement in the gymnasium as well, it just opened up my eyes in terms of the different modules that we engaged on, but on including the top global lecturers and researchers that we were able to engage with, that we were able to impart that valuable knowledge to us. It made me realize that the importance, the importance between integration of the science fraternity, which is mainly on the research component and the technology and also the inclusion of the indigenous way of farming as well. And at the heart of everything, for me, it's about good agricultural practices. And I think that's one of the main drivers, we, the well farmers organizations, so they need to start now with a program or to champion, to set up and champion the climate makers program. And which is a voice of farmers which puts back the power in the farmer's hand, where we all now are able to produce scientific based facts as to why we feel we are the solution to preserving nature other than what in the other industry are painting us in a bad light that we are the main polluters. And also just to be equipped as well with the policy issue where we have been taught to spearhead with the advocacy of the trades of the policy and trade side and also to to also be the voices of young farmers globally. And in the for for me, the core was more around the preservation of our natural resources and farming in a sustainable manner. And back to the COVID issue or how it disrupted our lives, I guess it, in many aspects for me, it brought some positives as well as challenges, where it now forced us globally to start thinking about how best can we utilize our resources, our skills to narrow down the geographical disconnect. I mean, we have seen like in the first lockdown, when most of the countries were under severe lockdown regulations. The farming industry was the only sector which could, which was really allowed to operate in most countries. And also it was a question also to make sure that with all the restrictive movement that were imposed, we still managed to consolidate or rather to coordinate the logistics system thereof. And for that, mainly we relied on technology. And that's another issue which even most farmers previously were a bit apprehensive about including or inclusion of technology into their funding practices. It's no longer now a nice thing to have. They realized that it became part of, it became one an equalizer and number two enabling to for us to connect and to conduct our businesses. Also, the some on some of the programs that we're exposed to on the gymnasium were around the management of resources, which I touched briefly on. One was the fertilizer and pesticide management, where one need to always be cognizant of usage of contamination of the soil. And when you also now get to the second line, where you know if you have, if you take something out of the soil, you need to give back part of it, like you need to put the nutrients back onto the soil. And so that we avoid the data mining and the soil erosion components. And also excessive usage of your antibiotics and the effect of that on the human life as well. And in our part of the continent, we never used to have constant flood or it was not, we never used to have, it was quite unheard of, where we did not really know what floods were in most part of the continents. I mean, it's things that we see on the media. But experiencing that on our own first hand, it's something that has sort of shocked us in the last few years. We've seen a prevalence thereof and how excessive and how constant they have become over a period of time. We have now sort of starting to normalize this erratic weather patterns and conditions. And also we have started to see the excessive heat conditions that we have. We start now to see a lot of drought in many parts of our continents also. And that only tells us that a lot has changed in terms of how we as human beings. And that only tells us that a lot has changed in terms of how we as human beings communicate or or do our activities or run our activities rather with the universe that there has been some disconnect. So bringing programs that brings harmony into uh the universe, usage of the natural resources and also ensuring that uh we have food access, food uh security and also um avoid um post harvest losses which affect farmers. And I guess for me, that has been some of the best tools that the gymnasium has afforded me um just to also understand how or who to call should one run into um a difficulty of some sort for my funding pro- uh funding uh pro- programs or entity. And also just to know that we have pool of resources globally as to where one can always um check upon and maybe bounce ideas off in terms of when one needs to either um improve on the farm management in general and just to get ideas in terms of how other farmers are doing in other parts of the world. So yeah, that's more or less for me and in most instances, yeah, those are some of the questions that um there are some questions that one would need um the science fraternity to also uh beg us up or assist us with as a funding community um in terms of bridging that divide that has always been there, which is, which to some extent is more or less been sort of too cold. And I'm sure that through proper consultation and proper collaboration, we can both find ourselves and also realize that uh it's in our interest to coexist and to work together as the two communities which were previously separated. Thank you.
Brenda, thank you very much. You touched upon many, many uh items that are actually on the table and the pipeline of the World Farmers Organization. And I would like to thank you because underlining the fact that farmers are uh putting their own strengths and efforts to become resilient to shocks like COVID nineteen, uh but also investing for mitigating the climate change, especially in the livestock sector and working for the health of soils, which is actually the basis for all kind of agriculture. Everything starts from soils. You can be forest farmer, livestock farmer, crop farmer. Uh all kind of agricultural specificity has to uh has uh has to have the assumption that soils are healthy. And that is means also uh an effective use of input seeds, fertilizers and um. In this sense, it is true that uh we have to close the gap between science and farmers. Uh sometimes scientists complain because farmers don't apply uh solutions that are so obvious to them, while farmers complain that science is providing answers to questions that they have never made. So actually, at the basis of the partnership between WFO and GRA, there is also a common view of closing this gap. And I'm happy to uh share with the audience and with you all that in this direction, WFO has established a scientific council, which is composed of international scientists uh that have committed to uh speak the scientific language, but with the voice of the farmers, which means translating the farmers' messages into the science language to be able to speak to the other entities, academia, university, research centers uh in the agricultural sector. So this is another achievement that WFO um made this year. And I'm happy to share it with you as well. Let me go to the uh chat box and see uh what are some questions that we have received. Um, I would like to ask uh my three uh young farmers, what is the major climate change challenge um that you are experiencing at farm level? And how are you dealing with it? It's nice because we have a representation from Europe, from South Africa and from New Zealand. So probably answers to different questions, um sorry, different answers, answers to the same questions may apply, and this is also good because uh from uh an exchange, uh probably we can also uh increase the knowledge of each other. Let me start with Sarah and then to Richard and then Brenda to reply to these questions. What are you doing practically in your farms to address climate change related challenges? Sarah, the floor is yours.
The biggest thing we're seeing um so far is the for the increased frequency and ex- extra, the like more extreme um sort of adverse weather events. So be it floods and storms or droughts, so we're getting more droughts that last for longer. Um and more storms that are, you know, we're getting hundred year storms and floods every three years. Um and so they're, they're kind of the two biggest ones. The one not, I hate, we're able to do about the storms, we're doing a lot of erosion planting and um things like that to try and um help, help manage, manage some of the effects. But um the drought one's the biggie, especially because we're in a, we're in a summer dry region anyway. So we always struggle to grow, grow grass um through that summer period. So really what we're doing is um, we've adjusted our stock policy and farm system to include more flexibility to try and help make us more resilient. So that as if, if we do get dry, we've got more levers in our farm system. Oh, we've got um more trading stocks, so we can reduce our stock numbers. Um we're using a lot of different types of forages um and more drought resistant, uh you know, drought resilient, uh deep rooted clovers and lucerne. Um to, so uh plants that'll perform in those um more extreme prolonged dry periods uh to help get us through. Um and then obviously doing our part as farmers to um, you know, focus on reducing our emissions. Um and uh so both in terms of how we can um reduce emissions from our livestock, uh farm them more efficiently, have them around for less time, so that we're still getting the same amount of product from uh from, for less emissions. And so we're, yeah, there's a constant drive to reduce our emissions intensity. Um and then also lots of, you know, tree planting for a variety of reasons, but including um uh carbon offsets, because um and using them as a carbon sink. So that's some of, some of what's going on, going on here.
Thank you, Sarah. I think you can be proud of what you're doing there. Richard, would you like to share your experience in mitigating and adapting to the climate change?
Yeah, no, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Again, it's difficult to follow Sarah because I'd love to just echo everything that she said. It's so, so true that the extreme weather events that, that we're facing. Um it eat, like I've just, like I said before, we've had the worst harvest in forty years. But well, that all amalgamated in the wettest autumn on record, so we couldn't plant any crops. Um and, and we kept trying to plant crops and, and we kept trying to plant crops in right into January and February. But then we actually had Storm Dennis and Storm Kira that came through and just flooded us out again. And we then got into March and from March to May, it went very, very dry, drier than what we're used to actually. So we started planting crops again to get them, to get them, well, to give us something to harvest in the summer. But then it was almost too dry that those crops didn't actually come to anything. And, and the ones which we had, had managed to plant in, in the autumn. And again, they didn't really come to anything either. And, and then all summer, we've had a very wet summer in the UK. And so again, it's just these extremes, it's from one to the other. And, and actually, we're in a very wet time again now when we're trying to plant last year's crops. And sometimes you think you don't have the same year, two years on the trot, but we seem to be having that a lot more frequently at the moment. Um so what are we doing really? We, we, we're changing some of the crops that we're planting. So obviously not putting all our eggs into one basket. Um honestly, on our farm, we're actually growing some energy crops as well as growing food crops as well, because that's what the market wants and it just gives us a bit more diversity i- in, in what we're growing. Um very much the same as Sarah, we've actually reduced our livestock numbers, but we've specialized more. So we're, we focus more traditional, traditional British breeds, so the Aberdeen Angus, uh which was bred in the UK as a beef animal, it grows much better in this climate. It grows off a grass fed system, so we're focused on more quality, um quality meat rather than just going for the commodity, commodity market. Um and then we've also planted trees on our farm as well. And, and again, from a visual point of view, from an erosion point of view, from, from a carbon capture point of view. Um so, so yeah, there's lo- lots of little things, but again, it does worry me that, that the frequency of, of these extreme weather events and how we're going to combat it going forward.
Thanks very much, Richard. You are uh also uh putting so much effort at farm level. And um this year that uh COP twenty six will be held in Glasgow, I, I really hope that you will also have an opportunity to participate in the construction of the conference, also showing what the farmers are really doing already to implement the climate change agreement. Thank you. Brenda, please, share your experience on practical practices that you are implementing on your farms.
Um for me, it's uh, I just tweet a little bit. My cattle have always been on nature of, I've al- always um grazed on natural pastures. So I'm not uh using or I'm not putting them on the feedlot. So that number one allows them to adapt to or to get to know the or to be inclined rather to the natural way of rearing. And on the crop side, um it's usage of organic matter over the fertilizer, which has also helped to make sure that um the organic uh practices are adhered to. And that talks to the agenda of the farmers that we always encourage uh in terms of uh agroecology, so this like being or harmonizing our funding practices. And also um going back to uh to going back to using our indigenous um uh crops. Like uh over the years, we have seen a lot of farmers moving away from your sawgans and your legumes, which are in ten very, very nutritious in terms of giving back the nitrogen and other valuable nutrients back to the soil. So um in the last few years, we, in the last few years now, we are gradually going back that after we realized that um changing too much or introducing a lot of genetically modified seed is some bit of disruption on our natural resources, on how our soil gets changed or how our soils change. And also making sure that uh one avoids the the soil erosion component where I've always planted a natural pasture. So that also helps in terms of preserving my soils as well for, for my cattle. So those are just maybe minor uh contributions as well. On the fresh produce side, it's using technologies that are using less water, like your drip system in te- in uh light or for versus the pivot system, which only makes sure that you water only on where needed, where water is needed. So that also helps to manage my soil, my, one, my water uh to reduce the cost as well and to make sure that one preserves this most valuable resource in terms of funding. That's what I'm doing on my part. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Brenda. This was also very useful. Hmm, I was looking at the chat box and many of the questions are actually aligned on the same message, that farmers, especially livestock farmers, are under the spotlight because it seems that um agriculture is seen as a big um responsible for the climate change, especially due to um greenhouse gas emission um of the sector. Actually, we all know here because we are experts, but um uh I'm inviting you to a kind of reflection. Um, we know that agriculture has also a huge potential in carbon sequestration. We also know uh from the late experience during the lockdowns that um uh when all the other sectors are uh are um not working while agriculture is, which is the experience that we had in the last months, then the planet seems to be relieved in a way. So as uh actors in the farming sector, we can accept that agriculture has its part of responsibility in uh affecting the planet and the resources, but can also be a huge solution to the climate change. What is really much more difficult to accept is this new trend of promoting uh plant based foods as a solution to the climate change because uh meat is that part of the sector that pollutes the most. Because apparently livestock sector is the one that is creating more soil erosion, etc. So my question to you, to the three of you is uh, what message would you give to the decision making people to tell them that uh plant based only diets are actually not the solutions, that are not viable, that are not sustainable? And that the livestock sector and the agricultural sector more broadly are actually contributing to really mitigate the climate change. So I would like to invite the three of you to make some reflections on this and tell me uh what would you, if you could sit in the next climate change negotiations at ministerial level, what would you tell the world's ministers to convince them of our message as farmers to the world? Let me start this time with Richard because he complains that he always comes after Sarah. So Richard, some, this time you can start and then it will be Brenda and then Sarah in the end.
Thank you very much, Lucy. Um, the, 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 the challenge we have is we will never tell people what they should or shouldn't eat as well. So it's all, it's all about choice and it's always all and, and provide as much choice as possible. And that's our job as farmers. But, but it's about the balance and it's about understanding the whole complex and the di- of the whole chain as well. So I mean, I'm going to pinch Sarah's pitch, you, you saw where Sarah farms on, on, on that fantastic landscape. Well, you couldn't grow the plants on that landscape to, to feed the world, but, but you can grow grass on that landscape and that grass will grow naturally and, and it'll produce beef, which, which then humans can eat and digest as, as a very rich source of protein and a very healthy source of protein as, as well. So, so I think we have to be aware of how, how we grow these crops as well. For example, on our farm, we grow potatoes on our farm. Well, the potatoes always grow better when, when we put some manure from the, the animals onto the land before we grow the potatoes. So, so that person who might just be choosing a plant based diet might be eating a plant based diet, but without that manure underneath those potatoes and, and that really helps in, in times of drought as well. So it is such a balance. I mean, another example is on our farm, we grow strawberries as well. But the amount of plastic we have to use on the farm to produce these strawberries, through putting irrigation pipes under the land, through putting like, we put polytunnels on the field and we put plastic down to protect the, well, to stop the weeds from growing. Like I say, it's looking at it from the bigger picture as well. Because that plastic has all got, be taken into the equation, into the equation as well. So again, we're never going to tell people what they should or shouldn't eat. But I think it's looking at the facts as well and the importance of it really. So that's, that's my, that's my point.
Thanks very much, Richard. Brenda, what, what would you say to the world's minister? From your perspective as a young farmer, what advice would you give? What message?
This is quite a difficult one for me, being a meat farmer as well. I mean, that's taking away my profits or my business. But I love that, I guess that, I guess this forum or this platform encourages that dialogue between us and the science fraternity. For me, I love, I'm a meat lover. So I would rely mostly on them to come with the scientific facts to tell me that meat is not good for me. I know it has some benefits, like in terms of providing natural iron to a human being. And we all know the people who have gone completely on the plant based diets. From time to time, they encourage to eat the meat products like your liver in terms of including the iron component of their diets or how, yeah, they add it or include it to their diet. So that's a big, big question rather to them, where we need those kind of answers to say, can one go exclusively on meat diet? But for me, it's something that only if I'm compelled to, I would go for. And so not as to sound too biased to my farming enterprise as well, or in terms of what I produce. Are there real effects or that could compel one to go full vegan or plant based diet? Or just maybe to have a balanced diet, which we all know is critical for the development of a human being? So I guess that's my stance and yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Brenda. I'm also a meat lover. I can understand you very well. Sarah, those nice lambs in your country, how do we protect them?
Yeah, so Richard alluded to some of it, but certainly from a New Zealand context. So it's not about telling people what they can and can't eat. But no matter what, people still need to eat. And protecting food security is even recognised from the Paris Agreement. It's, you know, it's, it's a core cornerstone sort of, it's a global life. And within the New Zealand context, there's a huge amount of land that can't grow, can't grow vegetable crops on it, but it can grow grass. So, you know, all the hill country on my farm, you know, there's maybe, maybe 5% of our farm, we could grow crops on that, you know, could be a vegetable crop or an input into a plant based meat. But the other 95% of our farm would otherwise not be able to be in food production. Because our hills can grow grass and the roomans and cattle and sheep are pretty amazing things. And the fact that they can take, take pasture or other, other forage crops and convert them into a source of protein, take them from something a human can't eat and convert them into a nutrient dense piece of protein that a human can eat. And so would we be better off taking all that land out of food production? And I just don't think, given, given we've got a growing world population, taking, taking hill country out of production because you don't think animals are good is, I just don't think a sustainable answer to that problem. And then you've got the arguments about how animals integrated with crop production are really important to balance that system and, you know, manage the number of inputs that need to go in and help with your crop rotations and make sure you're managing pest disease problems. So there's, there's sheep have got a role, even on flatland where you could grow, could grow crops. Animals have got a really important role in making that a sustainable life, lifecycle. And then you, I mean, you can get into the nuts and bolts of the footprint, you know, footprints of different products. And in some cases, animal products actually stack up very favourably to, to, to sort of any of your vegetables and sort of alternative proteins. So that, and that's a whole nother set of arguments again.
Thank you very much, Sarah. That was really, really fruitful. I will go with the last questions to all my panelists. One minute to give a message to the science sector this time. What would you tell the science sector? What would you need as a farmer? One minute, Richard, Brenda and then Sarah. And then I will give the floor back to Deborah and G R A to close. Richard, over to you.
Thank you very much. I mean, I would just say that we're an open door as an industry. Farmers are here to work with you, I think, especially our generation. We're very open to, we know change is going to happen and we know we need to adapt as well. And again, it's knowing our strengths and also knowing our weaknesses and working alongside specialists as well. So yeah, don't be afraid to knock on our door and come and, come and give us some guidance, some, some support. And sometimes we might be having difficult conversations, but if we don't have those conversations, how can we all move forward together? Because I think one thing that hasn't been touched on, farmers, a lot of the time, we get bashed quite a lot. We get, we get, because they said that we're actually the problem to all of this. But I think as Luttrell, yeah, spoken a few times, we feel that we are part of the solution and we want to be part of that solution with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. I like, don't be afraid to knock at our door. Let's hope some of our scientists will listen to us. Brenda, what would you, what would you tell the scientists? How would you work with them?
For me, it's key that, oh, it's rather important that we both find a way to work together. One, in terms of preserving the, preserving the planet that we have. It's in our best interest to find ways that are working or harmonising the ways of farming. And also the researchers can actually see the benefit of the farming community that are doing to do that. And also, other than giving them good subjects for their research, where else would they get the available information that farmers have? Because we are on the ground, we are giving them practical experiences that we have, which are not like only desktop based, it's factual and practical feedback or other kind of inputs into their studies as well. And also in terms of this collaboration, which we're grateful for, that both the organisation, the WFO and the G R A have put together. We, it's something that one is excited about as a young farmer, to know that we have a way where we can tap into whenever we run into difficulties, where we know who to call if we have challenges or if we have new or if you're trying to develop new innovations within our funding practices that we know we, or they are just a call away. If I for one would like maybe to do a new cultivar, I can always bounce ideas with the G R A and just say, okay, here is, here are my climatic conditions. And what is likely, oh, this is what I'm considering to do. Or they can maybe come up to say, oh, you know, that we think this is the best way to go about it. So that's how I see the two sectors coming together and collaborating as well, which is quite exciting for me as a young farmer. And also making sure that we have this productive and constant engagement with them, where we are feeding onto each other or tapping on each other's strengths and making sure that going forward, we are able to produce more collaborative kind of, what's that, what could I call it? The facts or just come up with new ways of funding, which are more inclusive to both farmers and to the both, to both farmers and the science fraternity, science and research fraternity as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Brenda. So from knock at our door to come on our farm and see what we are doing. Sarah, the New Zealand experience, I think it's the most advanced in the world with the G R A. But if you could give a message to the scientist, one minute, what would you tell them?
Um, yeah, so keep, keep working with us and collaborating with us, which I think is the, it's the key message. We are so reliant on the, you know, on the scientific community for our advances. So much, so much of the success of New Zealand agriculture is down to science that's been done over the last 20, 30 years. In terms of all the productivity improvements that have been made on farm, which have flow on benefits for climate change. And then now as we're, as we're tackling this, this, you know, changing world of climate change, we can't do it, we can't do it without the scientific community. Farmers are incredibly innovative and they're very good at implementing things on farm. And we're willing to uptake, uptake new technology and stuff. But we, we can collaborate, but we can't do it, we can't do it on our own. And so we need, and we also need that, that ground truthing and validation to, to make sure, you know, results we might be seeing anecdotally, or we might have seen something actually having that, having that tested and having some rigor applied around it so that it can be scaled up is, is really important. And that, and that collaboration is key to making sure that new developments that are, that, you know, do, do come up are going to be able to be practical and implemented on farm. So that, that just, it's a real two way communication. But particularly as we enter the world of policy implementation, that, that's all got to be grounded in science. And so we're reliant on the scientific community to, to help back that up and to come up, come up with tools that'll help us to mitigate into the future and allow us to continue.
Thank you very much, Sarah. So two way collaboration and communication. With this message, I would actually to thank Sarah, Brenda and Richard for sharing your experience as young farmers, as the before representatives and as representatives of the gymnasium programme. I wish you well and I really hope that we can meet again soon. Deborah, I give the floor back to you and thank you very much for the opportunity of this conversation, which I have enjoyed a lot. Thank you so much.
Yes, great. Thank you very much, Louisa. Thank you so much. We really appreciate the WFO joining us with this particular session. And I really, again, would like to thank our panelists, Sarah, Brenda and Richard. I'd also like to thank all of the Cliffgrads participants who attended this particular session for your great questions. I know we didn't have the time to get to all of them. But if I might say, I'm happy to, you know, pass some of the answers on from the panelists to those additional questions we didn't get around to answering. And if the panelists are happy, I could also share their contact details with you so they can start that collaboration and communication with you. So yeah, thank you all for attending this really great session. I was really, you know, really pleasing to hear the messages that were coming out at the end, particularly with regards to making sure that we continue that collaboration between scientists and farmers. Particularly important for you to think about as you're all embarking on, you know, the start of your career as agricultural scientists and how you do want to engage with farmers and make sure that we really get that sort of, that evidence base is required for policy in that collaboration between farmers and scientists. So thank you all again for attending this session. And I know that there are a couple more sessions coming up in this webinar series. But yeah, so we look forward to seeing you again in the next couple of weeks. Thank you all. Bye.